Let's call the special meeting order. We're gonna go through a little bit of control call here, Kevin. Call order, roll call.
Councilperson John Turner.
Councilperson Brent Irons.
Here, Jimmy John King. Councilperson Craig Anderson.
Councilperson Jeremiah Allen.
Approval of tonight's agenda for the special meeting?
Moving to a group.
Second?
Second.
Long and favorite segment. And I forgot the most important thing, pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of my United States of America and to the Republic of America's stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That will take us into the motions general business. And I think we have under the special meeting for general business is twenty, twenty-two law enforcement contract. PowerPoint discussion.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, and everyone else. Kevin Torres, from the Old Town Sheriff's Office. And tonight I'm joined by Chief Deputy Terry Wilewski, who is in charge of our law enforcement side of our office. The other side is our detention area and such. And then also Patrol Captain Chris Wallace, who leads, obviously, our patrol division. So he's here to support us. If there's any other questions that might speak specifically to operations and things that go on there. So for those that are out there listening, watching, I believe this is being recorded, so he might be watching it later as well. Just a brief little bit of history. The sheriff's office has had contracts with many of our small cities in the county for a number of years, including the city of Stewartville. And when I say a number of years, it goes back decades, certainly all my time here at the sheriff's office. And then specifically with Stewartville, for the bulk of that time, it's been a one deputy, basically twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five, which obviously a deputy can't work all of those times. So basically, it's four deputies that cover full-time contract with the city of Stewartville. And then trying to think earlier today, late nineties, early two thousands, we started a contract that added through the federal government, a cops position, a community-oriented policing position that still exists today. And that's one deputy that works eighty-four hours every two weeks and is dedicated completely to the city of Stewartville and handles a lot of other needs besides calls for service that go on for the city. Obviously, calls for service include, you know, critical calls like domestics, persons in crisis, car crashes, injury accidents, and all kinds of different things. And what I mentioned that those calls, we've talked about in previous meetings, those calls have increased. We've seen more of those. And certainly in the last few years, I think we can all agree that the need for more than one deputy to respond to those calls, one officer to respond to those critical calls has become more important, both for safety of our community and support of our community, as well as the safety of our officers or deputies that are out there. Certainly the victims and of course, if they're suspects, people that have to be arrested. You know, we're, we just kind of become that kind of a world where it takes more than just one deputy in many cases to handle some of these situations. So with that, we've started to really evaluate. Terry and I have been before you in two thousand fifteen, seventeen, nineteen, and now twenty-one with renewal of these two-year contracts. We have the discussion about what we're seeing for calls for service, the amount of hours that is down here, both of the city does pay for and salary for the deputies that work here and are dedicated to here, but also the amount of hours that come from other places. And those numbers have not changed much at all. In fact, there is increases. And Chief Deputy Wilewski will talk to that as we get into the PowerPoint in that presentation. So we also have heard over the years complaints that have come from some of you, some of citizens about they want to see a deputy more often down here. There's not a deputy working traffic on Main Street. Trucks fly by, you know, various things like that. We've heard those complaints and issues for a number of years. Or they don't see a deputy driving through my neighborhood, things like that. Well, basically, that one deputy that's down here is handling calls and they don't have a lot of that extra time to spend to do that other kind of extra enforcement that I think a city like Stewartville should be used to and should be expecting. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention too that we do have those contracts. I mentioned them briefly before, but we do have contracts in the city of Byron that covers portions of the day shift and our night shift. We work twelve-hour shifts with our patrol division, so they come in at six AM, they're down to six PM, and then at six PM to six AM. Those are our primary shifts. There's a power shift that comes in in the afternoon and throughout the late morning to the afternoon, and then they work till late at night to early morning hours. And they are dedicated to other areas and specifically out there to support the rest of the county as those calls for service increase throughout the day. So our other contracts, Byron has that. They also have a cops officer, similar to our currently deputy owner here in Stewartville. They also have a school liaison deputy that's dedicated to the school district, as well as through the summer months, the ability to respond to calls for the city. So that's a shared cost between the school district and the city, as well as a twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five deputy. They don't have the full hours there. They have portions of each shift, day shift and night shift. But that deputy is basically, needs to be over in those areas. So as those critical calls for service come up, that deputy is the one that is responsible to take those calls. And then the same thing is for our Yoda and Dover cities, very small contracts. But again, we have to have a deputy that's over in those areas. And then we have a contract in the city of Orinoco. Again, a small contract, but because of that contract, we have to have a deputy that is on that north side of the county that is responsible to those calls for service, those serious calls for service that are in Orinoco, as well as, you know, routine patrol and some of those things. And then another deputy, another contract that covers our townships, three of the four townships that circle the city of Rochester with the same responsibility. So those deputies, Byron, Stewartville, Yoda, and Dover, that's the same deputy that covers both those contracts, Orinoco, and then the townships, have specific areas to cover. And when we have a critical incident that's happening here in Stewartville, we're drawn from those other places to come down to Stewartville to help and support with what's going on. And that's, that's the gist of why we're bringing this to you this year with this contract proposal that we look at adding a deputy, basically two deputies, that will be here for those power shift times, as I mentioned, when things really get busier in the afternoon, in the evening, and early morning hours, you know, after midnight. So that's, I just wanted to lay the table out of kind of presented so the people that are out and watching and listening to this get a broad picture of what we're doing and why we're here and why we're making this presentation again tonight. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Deputy Wilewski, and he'll go through the PowerPoint, and we'll be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
All right. Good evening. Terry Wilewski, Chief Deputy, Old Town Sheriff's Office of Law Enforcement Services. Put together a little PowerPoint for you. I'm gonna go through a lot of the slides fairly quickly because it's just kind of data. You've got all the information, so you can certainly look at it closer if you want, you know, another time. Really just, I gotta remember to hit both at the same time here. You know, three eighty-sixty of Minnesota statute talks about the sheriff's office, responsibilities of the sheriff's office, what they have to do, because everybody always asks, well, what if we don't contract with you? What do you have to do? And basically, we have to respond to felonies, investigate felonies, execute civil papers, court papers, that kind of stuff. The sheriff is responsible for all waterway incidents like drownings and recreational vehicle accidents and that kind of stuff. And actually, the statute says outside of the municipality, but we've really been for the entire county. There are certain things, like the city of Rochester, we've given them the okay to do their own investigations because they're big enough that they can do those types of things. But ultimately, by statute, it's the sheriff's responsibility. So we do not have to, or have the responsibility to actually drive around every town and patrol it. But that's something that one of the reasons for the contracts is so that somebody is actually here to do that. Contract hours. So this is the total hours, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and then partial for twenty-one that we have put in. I have said this before, that these numbers are low. We know that they're not accurate. That we probably have more hours that are put in, but they're just not logged because we do it by hand, by computer. The deputies come in and they tell the sergeant, the supervisor, how many hours that they were down in each one of our villages, and they get logged. And so we know that at times, hours are forgotten about. They don't get in, or they come down here to assist. They go somewhere else and write the report. Technically, that's time that's spent here because they're doing something that was created here. The contracted hours, and I apologize because I have no idea how this number got put on there. And I looked at this thing ten times. But it's actually eight thousand three hundred and twenty that you contract for in the one contract, because remember, you have two contracts. So the twenty-four-seven that we're making the adjustment to the proposal on is eight thousand three hundred and twenty is what's in the contract. But our total hours, as you see, and we'll go with two thousand twenty, the last year, was ten thousand one hundred and fifty that we logged. So the difference, the additional hours, was at least one thousand eight hundred and five point two. That's what this slide represents. And those are patrol and our investigations hours that were logged. Not any other ones, supervisors that may have done something, whatever it might be. This next one again, I'm gonna go through really quickly. But if you look at it, it's a breakdown of all of our villages and the hours. And if you look at the two horizontal lines that are up there. Did you see? I changed mine, but I don't change this one. There. Okay. And then I gotta flip a page too. You gotta really do a lot of stuff. So anyway, the blue line indicates the number of hours that we're putting in. It's by month. And then the green line is again contracted hours. And of course, it moves because there's more days in some months than there are in other months. And so this is by two thousand eighteen. This first one, the next slide is two thousand nineteen. Again, consistently, the number of hours that we put in are are consistent compared to the green, the number of hours that we contract with. And then if we go to the next slide, it will give you two thousand twenty. Again, the blue, and we had a big spike there, as you can see, early on, a little bit of a spike, I guess. But in December, it kind of went up for hours. So real basic, you guys can look at that if you want to look at it more in depth. But it goes with all of our villages and hours. So the next slide is a partial of two thousand twenty-one. But again, the consistency shows that we're putting in more hours than we contract with. Continuing on, calls for service data. This is our calls for service, two thousand eighteen, four thousand two hundred and twenty-nine, two thousand nineteen, five thousand five hundred and twelve. We dropped down a little bit in two thousand twenty, but again, it's a COVID season. So I'm guessing that's why our numbers went down a little bit. And then in two thousand twenty-one, we're at one thousand nine hundred and two, and these are as of May the numbers. So it's not July, it's May when we pulled the data. The next slide is calls for service. It's just a list of the calls for service that we've taken. Again, there's a lot of information on these for you to look at. I'm not gonna get into these at all, but it just shows the calls. One thing I do want to point out, though, you have to understand our system and kind of the way we work. So you're gonna see, like, for example, the domestics. It's really not a high number, but we do get a lot of domestic calls, okay? So related people having some type of confrontation. But if it's, if there's nothing physical, no arrests made, nothing like that, it gets changed to an assist. So we change the nature of the call. So if it comes out as a domestic, we're sending at least two officers to handle that. At least two are coming here to handle the call. But in our system, it's gonna be recoded as an assist. That's why the assist number is so high and the actual domestic number on these logs is lower. Because, you know, to look at this first one, to say domestics, that there was only twenty-seven domestics, yeah, no. We get called to a lot more domestics than that here, probably at least one a day. So that's gonna give you three hundred and sixty-five if you looked at it like that, on an average. So, but they get changed to a different type when the call's cleared out at the end.
Before you go, Ron, Derek, could you just explain to me a little bit the call priority, how you rank them, one, two, two B, three? I mean, one's the worst, is that what I said?
Uh, one is the highest priority call, which would get the highest response rate from us. And our dispatch is the one that categorizes the call. Because when they put it in, and then if it's like a priority one call, they're sending at least two cars to that call. That's the requirement of it. So it all depends on what the incident is, on how it's ranked for these calls for service. Obviously, you know, the lowest is gonna be, you know, dog work or something.
Yeah. So two, two B, what's the difference there? One cop, two cops, or what's the deal?
Uh, you know what? I'm not sure how their priority ranks a two or a two B. I don't know. Again, the whole system is ranked by dispatch and how they respond humans to that call in their system.
All right. I just jump in here. I would also say that on these priority one and possibly some priority two calls, like the nine-one hangup call is basically what the nine-one means. It's a nine-one unknown call, most likely. Not only is it the two deputies that are going, but likely the supervisor is coming. And that's one of those calls that because there's obviously some level of potential arrest or bigger decision-making that's gonna happen. And that's not recorded in those contract hours either. So we should make sure that you understand that part of it too.
Any other questions? Well, again, there's some calls that require more than one deputy to respond. And that's where the sheriff had talked about, that we have to pull from somewhere else to come down here and handle that call, assist with it. The next page just goes on into two thousand nineteen, statistics of the same thing. And we go into two thousand twenty. And then two thousand twenty-one, which is again, just a partial year of calls for service. So the next one, again, we just kind of logged some of the reports and the reports that are written in the numbers for the years. To put in there some numbers, two thousand twenty, again, a down year, but again, service calls were less due to COVID. So the next slide, just a little setup on it. We compared, we did a comparison to other cities around us that we felt somewhat compared. You'll notice that we put Princeton in there, which isn't close, but the city administrator came from Princeton and had made note last time when we talked that that's where he'd come from, and they had a police department and all this. So we said, okay, well, we'll look at it and we'll pull the numbers for Princeton. But closer nearby, we compared to Lake City and Cassin. And you can tell that the two thousand twenty-one law enforcement was five hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred and forty. Uh, Lake City, just over one point four million. Cassin, just over one point three million. And Princeton, almost two point two million for law enforcement services. If you look at the number of officers they had, and most of this, we took off their website. Some we did contact, like Princeton, we did contact the chief. I did contact a sergeant from Cassin to find out what their structure was. Where you'll see, like, Lake City, for example, ten licensed officers, some part-time officers, and some reserve officers. The difference you get when you contract with the sheriff's office is you get our entire staff. You get seventy-nine that are able to respond here if needed. You get specialty position and resources from our administrative services, the investigative services that we have, all the training, the violent crimes enforcement team. It kind of goes on of all the services that we have and we can bring. If you need rescue stuff, we have rescue stuff. It comes, okay? It's not what you get with a small-town police department. And it's just the comparison of what you're getting for one-third the cost of the other places that have. And that's just their operating cost. That's not all the additional costs that they have for setup, for getting the dispatch set up, for records, for cars, for equipment, for uniforms, for training, you know, to initially get a department going. But we provide that to all our staff, and we provide the supervision. There's always a sergeant, a captain, a sheriff to go to if needed, the additional resources that are provided by a sheriff's office compared to having a small-town police department. Plus, your staff is not gonna stay. They're gonna go.
Can I ask you a question on this? Do you know if these other ones, Lake City, Cassin, Princeton, do they also have a contract with their county sheriffs, or do they rely on some of their, for investigation stuff? Does the county sheriff come and do some of that? Like you do in Rochester, where you go help out and stuff? Does the county sheriff come and help them also?
I don't believe that they have any contracted, but if they did a request for mutual aid, I'm sure that the sheriff's department would go help them if they need it. You know, again, with, with the city of Rochester and Old Town County, it's still in our jurisdiction. We can go anywhere that we need to. But if we needed assistance, which has happened now in patrol, they've left the city to assist us. They've had major incidences where they've asked us to come in and help handle calls, while they dedicate their resources to the call that they're on. That's something we do.
Well, you do that kind of like fire departments, you just swap mutual aid.
Mutual aid.
So basically, they can do this department, and without paying an extra contract, they get the resources of their county sheriff too, if they ask for it.
Well, all depending on probably what they ask for, how much they ask for, and how long is it gonna be dedicated to them? Because the sheriff doesn't have to give them an investigator to take over their incident and work the entire thing. But at the time of the call, if they ask for assistance, yes. I mean, if Cassin called and asked us to help them because they had something, we go to Cassin. But as soon as it was done, we'd leave. And it's up to them to handle it then. So that's the comparison amongst it. And even if you look at the proposed contract that we have proposed, which does include the cops deputy and the new contract for the six, is two thousand twenty-two, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, still considerably less. Plus, it's not even close, the resources we have to offer compared to what a small-town department can offer you. And even the experience, because like I said, you'll be hiring constantly. Because as you, as these small towns deputies get years of experience, they're gonna apply for the bigger department, and we're gonna pull them because they got experience. Any questions? Do you have any comments or questions? Uh, next page, we just get into the contract that's been offered. A hundred and twelve thousand six hundred and fifteen is for the community officer in two thousand twenty-two. Hundred and fifteen, nine ninety-three is a community-oriented police officer for two thousand twenty-three contract. The two thousand twenty-two has went up like four hundred dollars. It's very minimal, the amount of money that has went up from the past contract. And I believe in our last two, it was a minimal amount that it went up also in the two thousand twenty-one.
Derek, can you, we talked to the council and the mayor before on this and the staff. But can you, just for the folks that are listening, explain a little bit on how we arrived to those numbers, as far as the average?
So the numbers that we put in on the contract at the direction of the county board is really just for wages. And of course, with wages, you got the FICA and all the benefits and everything that come around to get to that number. So it's based just off of that. It's not equipment, it's not squad cars, it's not training, it's not any of that stuff that comes to actually provide the officer. They told us just to use what it is, basically for wages. And so how do we figure out what that number is? Well, we took the average of the patrol deputies, and that's how we come up with salary. We didn't take the sheriff's salary, my salary, you know, all those, which would raise it up higher than it was. We took just the deputies that would be working the contract. And we use their salaries to come up with the average number of one FTD, full-time deputy, that would be working here. And so that number, and we keep telling you this stuff because it is huge on how we are trying to cut the cost as much as we can when we do provide this. Because if we did the average of the entire office, it would be much higher than this when we start adding the detectives and the sergeants and the captains and all the ranks into that number. So the number actually kind of went down slightly from before because we have a lot of younger officers that are working for the department. You know, in five years, if all of them stayed and nobody left, their salaries would be higher, so that average is gonna go up, right? Because they have more years on, more service. But we felt that was the fairest way to come up with a number, was to take the average of those that may be working in the town from our patrol division. The the second contract that we're talking about, which is raising from four to six deputies, is six hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and ninety, I should reason. I'm confusing myself on numbers.
Those two numbers come out to the seven eighty-eight.
If you add them together, they come up to that number.
Yeah.
Uh, six hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and ninety, and then for two thousand twenty-three is six hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one for the twenty-three contract. So what does that do? That's two additional deputies that cover twelve-hour shifts beginning in the early afternoon. We could adjust as needed. If we have something that's going on all the time at three o'clock, we can adjust our schedules and they work over those hours where there's a problem. It's flexible, based off what's happening in the town and when the services are actually needed. We want to make sure that we adjust to cover that. So it's increased roughly two hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars for twenty-two. So some justifications, residential, industrial growth has been happening. The contract deputies' number has been the same for twenty-five years. Increase the public safety. We'll have more deputies here. There'll be more patrolling. I always remember the thing, when I was young and working here, it'd always be like, people would know if we were on the south end of town, and they'd go to the north end of town. We go to the north end of town, they go to the south end of the town. Okay, they know. This lets us separate out, and it increases that. Officer safety. We have to send two deputies at least to some calls. And we have to consider that in our roles of making sure our deputies are safe out there when responding to calls. Increase visibility, which I just talked about, a crime deterrent. People see a squad car, they're not gonna go there and break into that business. I'm sure your businesses that are in town will really appreciate a little more extra patrol around their businesses as a deterrent. Increase response time. Additional deputies will get us there faster. If we take someone to jail right now, there may not be anybody in your town. Because that deputy that was assigned here is now in Rochester at the jail with someone they arrested. We have that additional squad. There'll still be one squad here to cover the town until that other one gets back, and then you got two again. So it will increase that when those things happen. Next slide. And now I bring up any questions that you may have.
Josh, you got any questions?
Well, I know you said Byron has a contract, but what what is their contract valued at for your services?
Well, Byron has three contracts. And again, it's all based by the number of deputies that we have contracted in there. So their, their one contract is for twelve hours a day. So it's basically like a half. I'd have to look at the contract to So it's basically like a half, I'd, I'd have to look at the contract to give you the, which I do, I have the contract here if you want me to, I could dig it out, but, um, so we break that down. Then they also have a community-oriented policing officer, so that contract is the same as yours is.
Okay.
Because it's the same price. Um, and they also have a school resource officer. Um, and that school resource officer is paid for by the city of Byron, the Byron School District, and the Zumbro Education District. They split the cost of that. But again, we take that average number and, you've probably heard me say this, but when I first came into this and we first came into this, I had no idea how they come up with the numbers for what they charge in the contracts. And that was one of the first things we did was we said, we got to figure out how this number came about. And, uh, for, for example, and I, I can't tell you off the top of my head, it was six years ago, you know, Byron might have been fifty dollars and Sturville was getting charged seventy-five dollars and it was just weird like that. That's why we brought it down and said, we're going to base it off how many FTEs and that FTE is based off this amount. So that you're all on the same page at how much you're getting charged per FTE. So we figure out how many FTEs is required to cover the contract and then that's how it's charged.
So then how does that school resource officer's time get split out? Because, because they're not at school year-round.
Right. So that's why pays a portion of their contract. Because then in the summertime, they're working controlling the city more than they are with the schools.
Yeah.
And so that's why we do that. The same thing with in Yoda, they split theirs between the Yoda School Dist- Dory Yoda School District and the city of Yoda. So then in summertime, more hours are dedicated to the city.
Any other questions, Josh?
No, I think that was all I got right now.
Brett?
Um, how does like, like, we're next to like Pleasant Grove and High Forest Townships. Do they, they pay, the townships pay for their own, for their portion of deputies also?
Nope, they're part of the, you know, if they have a call for service, we respond to it as we're required by statute. Uh, we respond to it, just like all of the areas. The contracts give you that person in your town right there. If they wanted to contract, which wouldn't be very smart, um, yeah, they could contract. Because like Cascade, Heverhill, and Rochester have contracted for a deputy. And so they have one full-time deputy assigned to those three townships and they pay for it based off the same rate that we do for everybody else.
My next question is, uh, say they go forward with this and we get one or two deputies, could those deputies just be assigned to Sturville since they're, we're paying for our special deputies?
No, right now, we would assign the power shift, um, that is out there. I mean, that's kind of the way I have.
If, if you added, if.
Yeah, say we add, say we add two deputies or whatever.
They would be dedicated to Sturville. Yeah, absolutely. It's the twenty-four hour coverage, just like you currently have with the other deputies.
But then.
The question is asking.
So that say Pleasant Grove's a medical or some Pleasant Grove, would they respond to Pleasant Grove or would they stay here?
If there was a medical and a priority call, we would send them. Not going to say we won't because life is more important than your dollar for the contract. Um, just like we send ours from other places to come down here, if it's a, an emergency, a medical emergency or life-threatening, the closest deputy goes.
Well, I, I can't disagree that life's more important than the dollar. I think the reason Brett's asking that, again, he asked you last time and your response was Kevin, that, he asked you, he put it a different way. He said, if you need extra deputies, why doesn't the whole county pay for it? Your response was if, it wouldn't be really fair to the rest of the county if Sturville needs these two deputies because of increase. So what he's wanting to know is if we pay for two, except for a life-threatening situation, these two never leave the town and they stay here.
Just like they make it.
No matter, just, just like the morning out chance for Byron.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Just like if we're in summer.
Whatever.
Yes, they're going to be dedicated to you. And what we, we did say last time, I hope it was meeting or it was, um, afterwards talking to Mr. Schimmel. But let's say that deputy, one of those two deputies, uh, let's say the one that's covering Monday and Tuesday of that week in power shift. Um, and they took a big day off or they're in training or something like that, we're going to, we're going to backfill that, just like we would in Sturville. Because the, the current contract deputy, because you're paying for that time for that deputy to be here.
Good.
So we'll, we'll, we will cover that because that's what you're paying for, so you're going to get it. We're not going to short you just because another part of the place is up. But on the other hand, um, well, these small cities get it if, if they don't show up. And if Jason's not here, we don't backfill Jason.
Because he's the co- he's the cops.
He's the cops, yeah. But we're going to continue with our patrol, um, side as best we can.
The other thing that I would also kind of caution when you, when you say that we're paying for this, re- remember that the county's paying over fifty percent of the cost. You're only picking up forty or fifty percent of the cost of the deputy. And so we always like to remind, when we do pull them to go cover, you know, a priority call, well, the county is paying over fifty percent of that and that's because you're only paying for the wages. So i- it's, it's kind of like, um, with our community service office where the, they pay seventy-five percent, the county's picking up the other twenty-five percent of their wages. So if we pull them to go cover a call because they have to, you know, but it's no different than, like I said, with the mutual aid. If, if we have to send a deputy, uh, because it's an emergency or something, I mean, that's, that's what we do with this. We have to do it for public safety. But their priority would be here, if that answers, helps answer your question.
Me neither, Brett.
Hmm, I think I'm good right now.
That answer was two thousand, I asked. The other one is, are we, are we able to, when you talk about scheduling, are we able to share the schedule a little bit, like if we feel like it's, they need to be here at this time instead of, instead of being here from nine in the morning till three in the afternoon, we think they should be here at a different time? Are we?
Yeah, well, the power shift is, is ideally designed to be covering the afternoon and into the evening.
Well.
Whether it starts, they start at ten AM or two PM, it's going to be twelve hours from whenever they start in. And that's the flexibility of what a power shift does, is it gives us that, that opportunity. So if there's some events or some things that, that you, the citizens, whoever is seeing that, you know, we're seeing some, some thefts going on in, in some businesses or people lurking at various times of year, that, that's the beauty of that power shift person that can be flexed. However that is, day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month, it's all the same.
My other question is to you guys, is this an all-or-nothing contract? If we only want one deputy, are you going to go with that? If we don't want two deputies, are we no contract? I, I just need to understand that, how this is, how you're presenting this.
We're offering you this contract for law enforcement services.
I understand that, but if we don't take the two extra deputies, are we done? I mean, are you not along the same, the other one?
I'm going to defer that question to the sheriff. I have my answer, but I'm going to defer to him.
The answer, Mayor and Council, is yes.
It's all or nothing, if you.
If, if, yeah. And I know there was a brief conversation with the city administrator after the last meeting with that same question.
Well, I, I stepped on it in here.
Yeah, no, you were already up here, I think you were already commenting on the gallows for the meeting, so things had to get rolling. Um, the, the reason for that is, is, is if you say, if we were to say, okay, fine, we'll do one, um, then one day does that person work? How do we know when they work? Uh, do they work Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday? I don't know. Um, and then how, how about the next week? Um, or if they stay on our regular schedule, which right now is, is twelve hours a day, uh, deputy one works Monday and Tuesday, deputy two would work Wednesday, Thursday of that week. And keep in mind, they work eighty-four hours every two weeks. So again, starting with that two-week period, deputy one works Monday, Tuesday. Deputy two works Wednesday, Thursday. Deputy one comes back and works Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Then week two of that two-week period, deputy two, keep track of this, uh, works Monday, Tuesday. Deputy one works Wednesday, Thursday. Deputy two works Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So if you take one of those out, we have no coverage on some days and we don't know what those calls are going to be. And there's really no rhyme or reason. If we wanted to break down calls for service and, and we, we can do that, we can get into that as far as when do more priority calls happen? When do more domestics happen? Traditionally, people say, oh, they always get it probably through weekends and always after seven o'clock at night. That is so far from the truth. Um, and we could pull all kinds of data that shows that. Um, you can have some pretty serious stuff happen on a Monday, Tuesday, you can have a weekend that there's no calls at all. Weather plays into it, winter, of course, is, is different. We thought that COVID was going to be a big change in, in calls for service, like for domestics and more persons in crisis. It went up a little bit, but not a lot. It wasn't that big of a difference. And, um, you know, we watched it very, very carefully, uh, not only with what our calls for service were, but also what we were getting for arrests into the detention centers. That covers not only us, but also the city of Rochester and what they're arresting. And again, it, it was a very slight increase. So it's, there's just no way to predict that. I'd love to be able to say that we'll do one here and one there and even this out, I'd love to be able to do that. But I think we're, we're putting at risk our citizens as well as our deputies. And, uh, if, if we don't do the, the full coverage in this way so that, um, we know we have that same coverage every single day, uh, that's, that's the way to go. And, and I get it, it's warm money, I fully understand that. I'm a citizen, I live here, I get it, I understand that. But I think we're really selling short our citizens and, and the safety of them as well as our deputies, uh, any longer. And that's why we're bringing this to you. Yes, it is a, a take or leave it, uh, situation at this point. I just don't see any other way around it. And trust me, we have debated on this thing. And this doesn't go back to just like the last three months or something that we cooked this up. We've been talking about this for the last six years since I took office. It's been something that Terry and I have wanted to square away, alluded to that a little bit about, we had these wonky contracts in different places, um, with no rhyme or reason as to why they were so different in Byron, Yoda.
Were you still paying a new one, Sheriff?
They're getting better, but we're doing it, what they, the county board also gave us guidance on was if we were going to increase any more than six percent, any one of the contracts to eventually get them so they are all the same. As far as that, that average of our patrol division's, uh, their salary is. That's where we're getting to. When we get there and they're all even, it's going to, it's still going to take a, a bunch of time. And that's where, I think we had one contract, uh, maybe the last one or the one before, where there was no increases here for the city of Sturville.
You didn't do warm money, I think the cops weren't.
We tried to balance that to make it even because again, they were so wonky. And we've looked back at everything we can, we can look in, uh, from our records and could not find any reason why that was there. All, all I can suggest is that like when Deputy Sormberger was down here and Deputy Brummer, that they threw the contract out there as to what they were making as their salary. And they said, this is their salary, this is what you're going to get. We're looking at it way different because it, it seems more fair to you and the citizens that would keep it at an average. Because that's what you're getting, you're getting different deputies and, and different times in their careers, every different day, every.
I don't disagree with any of that. And I don't disagree that you need increases, we all agree on that.
Yep.
Seems like a fifty percent increase in one contract all of a sudden is kind of hurting, it's a hard bite, it's a hard.
Again, we've, I get it and we've talked about that as well, that.
In, in reality, you shouldn't be doing four deputy increase, to be honest with you, so that you have two working all the time. And so we are trying to compromise because we know of the cost by doing the two and trying to cover it with only two. But realistically, you should have two year, twenty-four seconds.
We're, we're taking, we're taking a bit of a risk in a sense of us saying we're going to do this power shift option. Because granted, yes, there are more calls for service between noon and midnight, let's just ballpark it there. There are, uh, regardless of the time of year. But there is also situations where we can have some really serious calls at seven AM and six AM. And we're willing and we're, we're going to cover those calls with whoever we can find. And that's the same for Sturville as is Byron, Yoda, Pleasant Grove Township, it doesn't matter where it is. We're still going to bring everybody we can at that point in time. If we have to, we're going to call people to cover those because that's important, life safety number one. Um, so we know that and Terry's absolutely right. Ideally, and you look at what these other cities are doing and the numbers of officers that they have, uh, technically you're only getting, paying for four deputies. Where you got other cities with ten and reserves and part-timers and, um, farming costs rolled into that. And we're willing to work with you on that and, and do that. I get the increase, but there's just no other way to cut it. And again, we have not just brought this up and cooked this up two months ago or a month ago or two months ago. We've been talking about this and we've brought it to you in the past. It's just this year, we're, we're at a point where we just can't do that anymore.
The, the other question I have quick, because I want the other two to be able to say something, is, uh, we're very comparable in size to Byron. Very comparable. Although they get by with twelve-hour, just a twelve-hour contract and not extra deputies and stuff like that.
Because you're not comparable to Byron. You, you may be close on.
Population.
The number of, uh, residents, but for industry, business, the volume of people that come through and travel through town and our calls for service, it's not close. I think I shared those numbers with you.
Even with fourteen running basically through their town?
Because they basically just drive through, it doesn't affect Byron at all.
And then the calls on the highway there are the state patrol.
Right.
One hundred and sixty-three.
Well, we analysis in the city limits, we handle this. Do you, do you really want to wait for a state trooper to get?
I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that. I mean, they have business on both sides of fourteen, fourteen is basically through their town.
They do not. Go, go to Byron at nine o'clock at night, around town. See how many people you see out moving around, see what you have going on. And I, I could pull up the, the calls for service number again, but I think the last time when I showed you at the last meeting, you're almost double the calls for service.
The other factor in there that's a comparison, Sturville and Byron. And this is not any kind of reflection, I talked about this when we had the big meeting over here about the expansion of the trailer court. And I'm not just speaking about the trailer court, because there's really wonderful people that live there. The difference between Sturville and Byron in relation to their popul- the populations, yes, numbers near the same because I don't know if they are at the top of my head, but they aren't, far off, you're right.
They're not too far. We've only actioned the last six.
Or five hundred.
Yeah, since two thousand, we've only grown like seven hundred people.
So the difference is when you add in multi-governors and, and, and multi, you know, proximity, that people live close to each other. When people live closer together, we all can, we all understand this, you hear more things, you certainly hear screams, the hollers, dispatches say, I can hear him hitting somebody, they're calling and they're saying they can hear somebody getting slapped or hit or stuff flying around the apartment or the, the trailer next door. Um, when you have people living further apart, Byron has far more of that than Sturville does, you're not hearing those things. Doesn't mean that's not going on. And we know that there's been all kinds of figures as to how domestics happen and one number, I, off the top of my head, one in four households has a domestic. But when you look at where the calls for service come up, and we talked about this, I think last year or last time, was if we know, when we break down how the quadrants are in the city of Sturville, forty-two percent of our calls for service are the northwest quadrant of the city. So we, no direct reflection on the trailer court, um, because there's industrial there and northwest quadrant.
So it's a trade this corner here.
Right here. So includes Lake Florence, Bear Cave Park, another factor, all the rest of that is the northwest quadrant. That's forty-two percent of the calls for service. So there is something to say to that. And, you know, again, I, I don't want to get too deep into that, reflect on that, that certain people have more problems or whatever, but there are more calls for service here, the numbers don't lie to that.
Well, you've answered my questions, I want Craig to do another episode. Do you, you have any questions during my, you guys?
Oh, I was originally going to ask about the power shift somewhere, but you kind of already explained that in, could be, you know, we, um, explanation.
Just one thing on that, Councilman, um, I, to note here, just to expand a little bit on what our, because we have a current power shift move for people that work each day already.
No, I think, Kevin, just a second. We're going to start, I mean, I'm not trying to cut you off.
This will, this will take me thirty seconds. Um, not only do they help and respond and support the calls for service throughout the entire county, but they also have other priority. county, but they also have other priority things that they need to do. That's, they do have folks enforcement projects, so wherever there are construction issues, whatever, they are the guys and gals that do our, that go out and focus on civil papers, our warrants, other special projects and special events, so we're already using those power shift people, and they're responding to calls here in Stewartville, now those other projects that they're doing are not getting to cover, so I just wanted to throw that out there too, so. Maybe not what you're looking for, but I wanted to add that piece to it.
Okay, hopefully, you need to...
I know you guys track the, track the time, like, how much time do you guys spend on the schools, if I know what's...
Are you talking about here in Stewartville?
Yeah, in here.
I take to be an honest answer to it, I mean, actually though, the last few years have not used your cops deputy to go to the schools. We've used whoever is doing the coverage from the patrol shift, because we understand that your cops deputy is for the city, not necessarily specific to the schools. So unless, again, it's that priority, we gotta get someone there immediately, we're responding the other cars that are assigned to Stewartville, because it is in the city of Stewartville. So we're trying to not use the actual cops deputy.
I'll just add to that, we specifically have told Deputy Owen that is not to respond there or take those calls unless, he's specifically requested or directed to do so, that they will get, we told the school, the school is, that they will get whatever deputy is working. So unfortunately, and I've been purring about not getting a school resource deputy forever, because I served that role, and I thought we did a great job there, but on the other end of it, they're not gonna get that same deputy every time, he's gonna have the familiarity with every single kid, which is exactly what a resource deputy should do. So they're losing out there, and that's, that's a problem on their end, and I'm frustrated. I'm struggling with that a lot, because I think they, they've been short-sighted on this for a very long time as well. So, they get what they get.
Brett, anything else?
I don't think so.
Well, we thank you for your time, for coming down again for the PowerPoint, to explain some more things to us, so we can mull this over some more, but we're gonna have to bring this to an end so we can start the next one if we can. So I look for motion to adjourn. Some, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.